Take your event to the next level with Crossroads TV. Professional audio and video production, multi-camera live streaming, audio system for your panels and entertainment, plus stunning video screen production on LED walls. High-quality, seamless production tailored to your needs. Let us bring your vision to life. Contact us today.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, everybody. I'll remind everybody, please silence their phones before we get started. And a quick announcement, I think I'm right. I'd like to wish a belated happy birthday to Chief Gould. I believe Chief wished birthday a couple days ago. Happy birthday.
He's already embarrassed from his phone.
You're welcome, Tom. Okay. First order of business, public announcements. Details may be found at www.farefieldme.com. The town of Fairfield is hiring. Please visit the website for more information. Nomination papers from SAD #49 School Board members are now available at the Clerk's office. The Economic and Community Development Committee will meet Wednesday, March 19th, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. to present the first in a series of informational sessions promoting understanding and sustainability in our changing climate. Lawrence Public Library, free tech help from the National Digital Equity Center every fourth Tuesday of the month. Jigsaw puzzle people compete in the library's first-ever jigsaw puzzle challenge on Saturday, March 22nd, at 10:00 a.m. Teams of two, 500-piece puzzles, two-hour time limit. Registration required by March 17th. Prize will be a local gift card and winner bragging rights. The library's website can be accessed from the town's website, and all programs and events are posted on the Calendar of Events page. You can also find us on Facebook. Second order of business, public hearing. At this time, I'd like to open public hearing for public safety ordinance amendments on parking. Do we have any members of the public that would like to talk? Counsel, any further discussion?
We went through it in pretty much detail last time. I'm happy with the changes.
Yep. Any additions? Michelle?
No. Just that it was a good cleanup, and it was more substantial than just the changes that happened in front of the high school on West Street, simply because of the fact that with the construction on Route 201, it created a lot of changes for how parking was handled on Main Street. So, all of those corrections have also been done at the same time, and quite a few little spelling or grammatical pieces, but that's about it. And then the other thing was some additions. We had some buildings highlighted, so as markers, so like Mason Building, their actual address was added, so to have those sort of things, but that's it.
One more time, any public comments? I want to thank Public Works Director Bruce and Chief Gould for all their hard work on that. Much appreciated. See no more comments? We'll close comments for public hearing. Third order of business, public comments. Limit will be three minutes. Members of the public may speak to the council or request an opportunity to speak on a specific item that is on the agenda, or may email comments for council to info@fairfield-me.gov by 4:00 p.m. day of the meeting. Submitted content may be read aloud at this time. Do we have anybody who would like public comment at this time?
No, I'll go after you.
Okay. I'll be short. I was here to report on the Somerset Humane Society. They canceled the meeting, so next month I'll be back. I also want to let you know that with our preliminary county budget, we've increased it less than 1%.
Fantastic.
So, we're keeping it very flat. I don't know what will happen when it hits the Budget Committee, but I think it will probably stay the same.
The best news I've heard all day of Commissioner Sayzak. Thank you.
Well, we work hard. We all pay taxes, so.
Yes.
We appreciate that everybody else pays taxes too, and we're all trying to pull our weight.
Thank you so much. Sabrina?
Hi. I just have to do a, I don't know, announcement. That's what it is. For the Victor Grange, this weekend, we have a benefit supper. It's on March 15th from 4:30 to 6:00. It's for Raquel Robinson, Ryan Gardner, Alex Russell, and Mercedes Cody. They're the ones that live on 8 Kelly Street and lost their house to a fire. So, we'd really love to have some townspeople step up and come and support these people and try to, you know, just have a supper and try to help them get stuff back together again.
What was the date and time again?
This one is March 15th. It's Saturday, this Saturday, from 4:30 to 6:00.
Thanks.
Or you can pop in, just make a donation?
Yeah, sure. If you don't want to eat, sure, but man, that spaghetti from the Grange, I'll tell you what, it's good stuff, so you might want to eat. But yeah, you can make a donation, sure.
Okay.
Yeah, be well appreciated. Thank you.
Those Granges are good cooks.
Yeah, they are.
Kevin?
How you doing? I want to address the council about an issue that some of our residents are having with PFAS testing. The question right now could very easily be, how many of our residents right now are drinking out of contaminated wells? Nobody can answer that. The reason why is apparently DEP has quit testing our wells, some as, or should I say, the last ones that I can track down are December. I was getting tested monthly. The last one I had done was in October. There has been no feedback from the DEP to any of these residents. And with that being said, multiple residents have tried reaching out to the DEP via email or whatever, and have gotten zero responses back on what's going on with the testing. Even some of the contractors have been trying to get answers. I know they were going into a rebid process to get contracting funding, apparently, to get the testing done, and there's still no word on that. So, my question is, maybe we can, as a municipality, reach out to the DEP in favor of all the residents that have no answers right now, to find out what the barriers are, why we're not getting any correspondence, and just asking questions. I think it would be best bet, instead of everybody that's having these issues, try and reach out and talk to the DEP individually, whereas I think it would be a lot better for the municipality to reach out in an official format and get us some answers. That being said, I also want to, this kind of segues right into the eighth order of business on the PFAS committee that I'd like to reserve time on if needed. Thanks.
Thank you. Michelle, could we draft a letter on behalf of counsel?
I can just, I'll call tomorrow.
You'll call?
Yeah. It was mentioned at the PFAS meeting that this might be an issue, and I knew Kevin was doing that research on that, and we were looking for that feedback, but I certainly will call tomorrow and see if I can find out what's going on.
Thank you. Max?
Max Kenny, I'd like to reserve time for the eighth order of business to discuss the PFAS committee report.
On budget, Max, is that what you said? PFAS?
Yeah. The PFAS committee members technically don't have to reserve rights.
Yeah.
You're actually scheduled.
Same.
Okay.
I am, however, wondering, only because I think I caught the whole thing, but I'm not sure what that was. No, I got that, but what was your comment as far as, like, the state and they're not corresponding?
People with contaminated wells have not been tested.
Was that what you came here to say? Okay. All right. I don't know. That all sounds to be outside of what our committee stuff. Okay. Probably speak later, I guess.
Okay. Thank you, George. On the eighth order, yeah.
How you doing?
Good.
Paul Nichols. I want to bring us back to 31 Lawrence Avenue. I've watched some things online. That hasn't been much of a topic in a while. I've not been here because I was displeased with how the executive session took place. For one, I understand that an executive session is only to discuss a situation that may put the town in jeopardy, but the action item should have been decided whether they were going to sell or dismantle, not to decide to dismantle it, because if you were going to dismantle it, it could have been made right here in a public session. If you were going to sell it, then it would definitely put the town at jeopardy and at liberty to kind of not put that information out there. With that decision being made after the fact, we're now talking, the town, the last I understand is what, $65,000 that we want to further invest in, $300,000 that the town has already invested in. And I understand that it's underneath a town warrant, but I would recommend that this town go back and bring it before the town's people, because I think they were shamed in that time period. We're talking almost, what, 15, 20 years? Yet, the property still sits there today, and nothing is being done other than the garages that got tore down. And furthermore, when you start using the town highway department, it still is a cost. It comes out of their budget. It's not free. So, I am very angry, as you can tell, but it's very upsetting that we have allowed the town to go forward with wanting to spend more. So, what you're going to wind up with, in my calculations, is about a $250,000, or half a million-dollar parking lot. And then maintenance beyond that. I'd like you to consider that in any further discussions that come about 31 Lawrence Avenue, but it's been put on the back burner for 15 to 20 years, and that is unacceptable, and it is hurting the taxpayers. Put it on the market, get tax revenue from it, don't tear it down, and then you are not.
Okay, Paul, I'm going to stop you, because this is an action item that we've already taken care of as a council, and we've already awarded the bid to tear it down.
So, we're going down already, two we go?
I'd like to further this discussion. That's fine. You can do whatever you want, but you can also rescind it.
And it's already been done. If the building's already down, we've already awarded the contract to tear it down. That was at least two meetings ago.
So, we have a half-million-dollar parking lot.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Any other public comments?
Hi, Bob Woodson.
Hi, Bob.
Yesterday, I took advantage of the arts and crafts up at the library. Had a very nice time, and just wanted to put out there that people are using the program. It was a lot of fun, and for me personally, we did mosaics, and it was ideal for my fine motor skills. You know, take a little towel and put them just right. Little bit of a challenge for me, but I got through it. Had a good time, met new people. And so, just kudos to the library, and thank you.
Thank you, Bob. We're finding the library is a very valuable resource for us. Much appreciated comments. Any other public comment, or anybody want to reserve time for later? Chief, you all set? Okay. See no further. We'll move on to fourth order of business. Reports from staff and committees. Town manager report.
I'm sorry, Tom got me all messed up. All right. Well, I printed one off, but evidently I did not put it in my binder. I just got to get the exact dates. So, most everything that in the last two weeks since you've met will actually be discussed throughout the course of the agenda, but February 27th, I did attend the Legislative Policy Committee meeting via Zoom, so that was good. Still lots of bills coming through for the municipalities. March 4th was the Economic Community Development meeting, as well as the PFAS committee meeting. And then, also, just as a reminder, the Kennebec Regional Development Authority, or First Parks Annual Meeting, will be held March 20th, which is next Thursday at 5:00 p.m. at Waterville City Council Chambers, and that meeting is open to all members of the municipality of Fairfield. And that's it for me.
Okay. Counsel should have got all the managers' reports, very in-depth this month, so I want to thank all our department heads. Fantastic job. Lot of work to those. Other committees, economic development first.
We met on March 4th, as the town manager said, and on the agenda was the possibility of having a community event called Fairfield Hay Days. It was discussed with Tim Martin and Matt Tully, presenting a prospectus for the event that included a sponsorship package and events taking place in different venues around Fairfield. More discussion will take place on this topic under the eighth order of business. The committee also reviewed details for the April 15th public workshop on the downtown project. This meeting will be held here at the community center at 6:00 p.m. The committee also reviewed the first draft of the public survey on the downtown, which will be going out about 10 days before the public meeting here. The survey will be found on the town website, and we encourage people, citizens, people with businesses, to fill out the survey for us. We also did a final look at the Mill Island Development brochure, getting it ready for publication, and we ran out of time, so there was no discussion on the town farm, and it's postponed until April. And that's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
PFAS, Dr. T., we're going to do eighth order of business.
Correct. Thank you.
Okay. Building Committee, Peter, anything new?
As of right now, there's no volunteers from the residents for this committee.
That's not true.
And this is a very important committee, since Minnesota buildings are old and disappear. So, applications are due by March 25th. I'm just, I'd like to see residents get involved on this. This is a very important committee.
I haven't made mine out, but I will.
Should we extend that date? I mean, March 25th, a couple weeks away. Can we extend that?
Deadline is actually March 20th.
Okay.
And we do have one application. It actually came in as counsel was setting up this group, so we do have one. But the deadline is March 20th, so that we had the applications in time for your meeting on the 26th. If you do not have what you need by your meeting on the 26th, you certainly can extend that deadline then.
We're looking for nine?
Looking for seven.
Seven.
Does it have to be seven?
I had it be four, five.
Could go to five.
Yeah.
That way, I'll make mine out this week, so.
Okay, so, we're going to, we need some help for that volunteer budget committee, so if you know anybody.
The building.
I'm sorry, the building committee. You know anybody that would be interested, the better the experience, the more knowledge they can bring back to the council, and we definitely need to proceed on our buildings as they're aging, so all the help we can get would be much appreciated. Any other committee reports? Budget Committee did meet last Saturday with counsel. Have their recommendations, I believe, in eighth order of business as well. Okay. Fifth order of business, consent agenda. These items are considered routine and standard business, and therefore will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these matters unless a council member requests prior to consideration of this portion of the agenda, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered next on the agenda. Item 25-28, order that Fairfield Town Council hereby waives the reading of and accepts the minutes of meeting 2025-04, held on February 26, 2025. Item 25-29, order that the Town Council hereby approves the treasurer's warrant #109 to include but is not limited to New England Salt Company, motor vehicle fees, MSAD 49, March allocation, and Summit Natural Gas. Item 25-30, order that the Town Council approves and signs sewer certificate of commitment in the amount of $149,367.75 for the first quarter fiscal year sewer billing for the period of 1/125 through 3/31/2025. So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Dr. T.? Four zero. Sixth order of business, old council business, building committee volunteer applications due March 20, 2025. We'll stress that again. We really need the commitment from the town. We need that volunteerism. Very important committee. PFA's committee report, again, to be discussed under the eighth order of business. Seventh order of business, to take action on the following items of business, as read by council chair. Item 25-31, order that the Fairfield Town Council hereby schedules the town charter required public hearing to hear public comments on the annual town budget meeting warrant for Wednesday, April 23, 2025, at 6:30 p.m. Do we need a motion?
Not moved.
A motion by Counsel Tivod, second by Dr. Townsend. Any discussion? All those in favor? Four zero. Item 25-32, order that the Fairfield Town Council hereby amends the public safety ordinance, parking section 6-11.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Tully, second by Counsel Lawrence. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Four zero. Item 25-33, order that the Fairfield Town Council hereby considers and approves Public Works Director recommendation toward the Culvert project to Jordan excavation in the amount of $469,985 to come from the paving reserve account.
So moved.
Second.
No motion by Counsel Lawrence, second by Counsel Tivod. Any discussion? See Counsel Tivod.
Bruce, given all of the, there were four companies that submitted bids for this project, and Jordan excavation was for $463,985.
That's correct.
And why are they so cheap compared to the other ones? Is there any particular reason?
No. They wanted the job. I spoke with this company. It's a job that fits them well. They're working in Nordwalk on a similar-type project, so they just like to stay close within an hour of home. They're a good, reputable company.
Right, because they're out of Kingfield.
Yes.
So, okay. And have we used them before?
Many, many years ago with our landfill closings.
Okay.
Michelle?
Just a clarification piece with this bid process. This was actually done by Dirigo Engineering. It wasn't done in-house by us. And when Dirigo Engineering does bid processes, companies actually get charged for copies of plans and all of those pieces that go along with it. That's what offsets our costs for engineering services. And oftentimes, these contractors will pay for these plans, and then they will bid on them, but throughout that process, they were successful at being awarded bids in other locations. So, sometimes they'll put in higher numbers, they stay in the game, but they don't necessarily need the work, which is why sometimes you'll see such a huge span between one contractor to another, too. That's another piece that kind of goes along with it.
Because all the work is essentially the same that's got to be done.
Yes.
So, okay.
And it could be from, like you said, from how far away is the company, because mobilization is usually at least 20% of your cost, so.
And so, the public knows the highest bid was $684,000, and Jordan was the lowest, so.
We actually have a $200,000 grant to go towards this project.
That's good to know. That's, thank you.
When is the projected time for that?
It has to be done, don't quote me on this, late July, early August, environmental reasons, bat reasons, and so forth.
Eagle nesting season, and all the environmental pieces.
It has to be done in a very dry season.
All right. Thank you, Bruce.
You're welcome. Okay, any further discussion?
Not that it matters necessarily, but I have number listed.
Not that it matters necessarily, but I have number listed on the agenda, and in our bid, it's just a different number. So 463 was our bid, and it's in the item that we're looking to pass. It was 469,985.
So.
That probably should be.
Yeah, I'll make a friendly amendment to the motion that it is for $463,985.
So moved. Is that the correct number, Michelle?
Yes, 463,985 is the correct number.
Okay.
Thank you, Matt.
For your motion, a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? One, four zero. Item 25-34, order that Fairfield Town Council considers and approves the purchase of two new police cruisers from Quirk Ford, as recommended by Police Chief. Funds to come from the police capital equipment account. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Council Lawrence, second by Council Tivido. Any questions for Chief? Is that what Council Tivido?
So, we're looking for two vehicles. And you gave the price also for the Dodge Durango police package with no options.
Correct.
And that's $41,970 for one vehicle.
One vehicle.
And the two Ford police interceptor utility vehicles for both vehicles, it's $49,998.
For one vehicle.
So we've got to double that price.
No, we're only purchasing two vehicles this year.
Yeah.
The officers that are receiving, that will be driving the vehicles, one is interested in the Durango, the other one is interested in one of the four.
Well, that's Stephanie, that's the first vehicle and the second vehicle.
Okay.
Not two vehicles, three vehicles.
Okay, so that's what we're.
They have two available at that price.
Okay, so we're looking at, this is separate, I say. So one's going to be $42,000, the other one's $50,000, about $72,000.
And that doesn't include upfitting. I didn't do any of the upfitting until I had an idea from the board, which vehicles you wanted to go forwards with. So we will bid the upfitting as soon as we have an idea which vehicles will be purchased.
Yeah, and these are the ones that we talked about earlier, that they're already there?
Well, they're, one of them, the Ford is called, yes, they're already there. I'm sorry, they're holdovers, and that's why I am here a couple of, about a month, month and a half early. They're holdovers, and it would be quite a bit of a savings for us to get them now.
I'm all for that.
You'll notice that the Durango dropped $500 from the last time we purchased them. So that's, that's why I've been looking at older vehicles, not older vehicles, leftovers.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Is either one of those, the ones that was road-ready, remember we had that discussion about the one that's road-ready, is that one of them?
One of the, one of the Fords, the two Fords are both road-ready. They have light bars built in, all of the LED lights that we normally purchase, and the upfitter installs for us are already in the vehicles.
So that would be, that would be the two Fords, right? On the bottom, the $45,000?
No, that one is not a road-ready vehicle. They call it road-ready, but it just has a few LED lights in the front and the back. That is a 2023 model, model that's at Darlings in Bangor. We're looking at the.
Oh, I see, yeah, okay, yeah.
So in all, we're looking for, we're going, the two Ford utility vehicles are what we're looking at? And then next year, the Durango?
No. One Durango this year, one Ford this year.
Okay.
Is what we're asking for.
All right.
We're going to go with the two Fords.
Yeah, so we're looking at about 90 some odd thousand dollars.
$91,985.
Yeah.
So, well, one's, one's already decked out and ready, the other one will need to be outfitted, right?
They are not decked out and ready. They, Ford calls it the ready for the road. That is because the switch box.
Yep.
The lights, everything's all in it. It's ready to, it's pretty much ready to go. We still have to put the tree, the computers, we have to put the cages in it. A lot of that equipment we have for the Dodges, we've gotten through grants over the years that are sitting over there right now, so we'll have to give a breakdown to the installers when we ask for the equipment to be put in, because we do have quite a bit of the equipment that we can swap over.
So there's two, you said, Tom, about the Ford, and there's something, there's two available, correct?
There's two available, and one Dodge.
The, the Dodge, how much is it going to have to be spent on that to get it to where the Ford is?
The upfitting is somewhere between 13 and 15.
So that's going to be 41 plus 13,000?
Correct. And the Ford is going to have an increase as well, because that's going to need, you know, may need cages, it's going to have to have some installs done. So it's, it's about a wash when you look at the two vehicles. Is the ready-for-the-road vehicle, is going to have that, about that much of a saving for the install, if that makes sense?
Yeah.
You know, a lot of the equipment's already there, so we don't have to purchase it. With the Durango, we're going to have to purchase light bars, we're going to have to purchase cages, radios, switch boxes.
On the other hand, we could go with both, both of the utility vehicles.
Absolutely could.
And save about $15,000.
No.
No, $10,000.
They still need upgrades.
I understand that, but what's, they're, they're already coming with what's listed here, whereas the Dodge Durango is not.
Right. Chief, would you say about $4,500 to finish off those two Fords?
Boy, that's putting me on the spot. I don't know. I would think it would be a little bit, labor has really gone up.
It's about $5,500, that's what I figured out.
Probably more than that, depending on the equipment that we have to purchase, because we still may have to purchase cages.
She all knows.
So what he's trying to explain is the fact that the, the Ford vehicle at 49,998, okay, you're paying for all of that pre-installed equipment that isn't in the Dodge Durango at 41,987, right? So it is actually, they'll both need some additional work. The Ford, not as much as the Durango, but they will be ultimately about the same price when they're all said and done.
When they're all done, yes.
And we just, we have an employee that would prefer to be in the Durango than the Ford. And the Fords, remember, are ones that we have had issues with in the past. It's just the fact that we have these vehicles now that are sitting on a lot, they're available, and we know that vehicles that we have ordered in the past can sometimes take us a year, and we're actually getting a cheaper price, because they are, even though they're brand new, they're still, they're holdovers, they're the prior years. And because they're holding these, it puts us in a really good position, especially if you've listened at all to what's going on with the potential tariffs for the steel and aluminum industry, so, and what that could do to vehicles, so.
So purchasing three?
Two.
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 One Dodge.
I will get this right.
One Dodge, one Ford.
And one Ford. The reason I say that is because I'm looking at the back page.
He wants one Dodge and one Ford.
Well, that's what he wants.
Yeah, that's what we're voting, to give him what he wants.
Which is cheaper, anyway.
The installations are going to be about the same amount, you know, the total vehicle cost is going to be about the same for each one, because of the, like the town manager said, one of the vehicles has already a ton of equipment in it that we're not going to have to purchase. So the prices for each vehicle should, you know, be about even.
In years past, we've always kind of thought it'd be $10,000 to get a new vehicle road-ready.
Oh, it used to be.
Used to be.
It used to be.
But we did was 18.
Close to 15, I think, is what we did last time. It was 20, 30,000 for two vehicles.
But we'll have to bring that part, that part will come back to you.
Yeah.
Right, so afterwards. This is just to get those vehicles to know that they're only sitting in our lot, in our dealership lot, and going to another municipality. So, and the police department reserve account has $226,542.30. So the money is in the reserve account to cover the cost of both of these.
Chief, the, the Ford, you have quite a bit of equipment left over, you can swap from the old ones to the new ones, too?
Correct.
So it's fair to say that.
Well, if it fits, the old cruisers are 17s.
I mean, it's, a penny saved is a penny earned, and if that, if it's available.
Just replace them all right now.
That's what I'm thinking. And save money in the long run.
I'm fine with that. The money's in the reserve account, we're going to add to it this year when, when we do.
Why, get all three?
I think it'll be probably three years before we have to purchase another one, if we do that.
If we do all three?
Yeah, we'll be saving money.
So we'll save three, yeah, that's a saving.
I know that the ready-for-the-road packages and the 2025 models are about 53, so there is some savings there.
And we've got enough money for the up, getting it road-ready, right, Michelle? Because we're looking at $54,000 for three vehicles, roughly?
That's what I'm adding right now.
Okay. We're on the same page.
About 162 for three.
And then the 54, yeah, because you have to get it road-ready, so at 50, 18.
54 times three, we want 62.
Yeah.
We got it.
Do we have it?
Yep.
I, I think we should go for all three. A penny saved is a penny earned.
I'll make a motion, we purchased the one Dodge Durango and two Ford police interceptors.
Second.
And I'll second that.
That's good.
You're welcome.
Come to you, asking for two gets three. That's good, though.
So we have a motion by Council Lawrence, seconded by Council Tivido. Any other discussion?
I think it actually, you know, they're looking at it by next year this time, it's definitely going to be more than that.
Might be, might be double or tripled.
Definitely be looking at a significant amount, 10 to 20,000 probably.
Yeah. Michelle, what did we put into that this year?
Into what?
For the, for the capa reserve.
Yeah.
You mean in the new budget?
Yeah, what was that?
70,000.
So we put 70 in?
So put us back up.
65 went in this year, 70,000 is what's scheduled to go in for next year.
Was back up, around 135.
But they won't need to buy a vehicle for three years.
That's a no-brainer. Yeah, we just put the money in, so, yeah.
Yeah, hopefully.
Hopefully, knock on wood.
Good call.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor to purchase three vehicles? Four zero. Eighth Order of Business, council workshop and other business. Item one, discuss report from ad hoc committee to address the ramification of PFAS.
Very good. Would you like me to go?
Dr. Townsend, I'd love for you to start us off on that one. To the committee that's here, I want to thank you. Fantastic job. Big report. I know I talked to Kevin, and he said it could have been easy, 200 pages, so.
Yep.
Thank you for cutting it down to 84 for us less studious that don't want to read 200 pages.
It's, it's quite.
But thank you for all your work.
You're welcome. So this is kind of the first step. I think I just want to make sure, we started this back in August of 2023, so it has been a little while, but it took a while to get all the parties together and start the ball rolling. But something that I had talked about at that point, so I'm glad we've actually kind of reached at least the completion of the first step. So I do want to thank all the folks that were on the committee with me. John Pachati, who's not here tonight, George Hoffman, who was, but just left, but I'm not sure if he'll be back, Max Kenny, who is in the building, Kevin Kitchen, Greg Lambert, and they had two others, Anthony Violet and Rebecca Wentworth, who had to resign. But those members were there every night, every night that we were there, long discussions, long meetings sometimes, and everybody had different ideas, and I think we all had our own preconceived notions potentially going in, and how we wanted to approach things. But I think we're all very much open to different ideas and other thoughts. And there were definitely were different ideas and different thoughts, and I think that's an important part of that, that there were, there was an open discussion on this, on this committee. And I think, you know, we were given the kind of challenge and the mission, you know, you can look at it, and we kind of accepted this. The big ones are to assess the continuing need for additional water and soil testing to provide a network of testing sites, to investigate possible sustainable uses for contaminated property, and establish a portfolio of possible alternatives for citizens' assistance, to develop a long-term plan for clean water availability for affected residents and areas of town, as well as conducting a cost analysis of current and future programs. And the final one, an educational campaign around challenges to individuals and the town of Fairfield as a whole, i.e. health concerns and property values. We want to have a one-stop portal for information that makes information available in various formats, including electronic and print. I think, you know, we go through those, I think our biggest, you know, we can go, I could, we have one meeting just to cover this, to be honest. But I know we have lots of big things on the, on the docket tonight. But I think that we started talking and assessing the continual need for additional testing, and then the filtration systems. We're looking at, you know, one of the biggest things, our biggest worries that we have long-term, and it's actually going to be short-term, is that the availability of that funding is coming to a halt. And we have been told that when it is gone, it is gone, in no uncertain terms. And that burn rate of their money that is out there to do additional testing, yeah, I'll help chat out, to help with additional testing, and also looking at additional filtration systems, was anywhere from two and a half to five years, and that was a year and a half ago. During that time, we've had instances of other locations and other communities having problems. We've had an incident in Brunswick that got a lot of PR, probably negative, but it probably helped us, at least keeping PFAS at the front of the, front of the discussion. So that's one of our biggest issues, and I think we want to make sure that there will be a continuing need, or we, we are stating that there is a continuing need for both testing of water and soil throughout the town of Fairfield in the foreseeable future. The Town Council should contact the state of Maine legislative representatives and request that funding for remedying the town of Fairfield's PFAS situation is to be continued. The second one, investigating possible sustainable uses for contaminated property and establish a portfolio of possible alternatives for citizens' assistance. A lot of that would be directed to the Department of Agriculture, Conservation, and Forestry, as they are working on a toolkit on that end, but their focus is a lot on agricultural properties. And to some degree, I understand that, but all of our individuals who have been next to agricultural facilities who are affected are kind of forgotten in that. But at least they have a initial source for us to go to, and we're trying to use that as you go forward for information. We want to make sure the recommendations to the Town Council from the committee, the town should closely monitor property values for properties impacted by PFAS contamination land and water. The Town Council should create a new committee dedicated to land development of environmentally affected properties, investigate other PFAS-impacted locations across the United States for lessons The third one was to develop a long-term plan for clean water availability for affected residents and areas of town, as well as conducting, conducting a cost analysis of current and future programs. And this is probably where we had the most discussion on the committee, due to past votes and everything, I think we want to pull that out. I think those, that's important, but there are lots of different options, and I think that's where we had our biggest discussion as a committee. I think, I'll go through these, and I'll throw in my two cents, I'm sure the other members of the committee will say, say their opinions as well. So we want to assess the feasibility of public drinking water expansion for both commercial and residential locations, so that property owners have long-term access to water that meets federal and state drinking water standards. We want to partner with the Kennebec Water District to develop alternatives that avoid mandatory connection to future public drinking water infrastructure expansion. And the town of Fairfield should work towards acquiring federal and state grant funding for all projects, so the use of local property tax dollars is avoided. I think that's the biggest recommendation for us on those ends, is just that. I think a public drinking water system is a good option, but we want to make sure that there is no additional cost to local taxpayers and no mandatory hookup, because that'll be part of the, the process. And I think that's important. This, and the other part of that, as a discussion, as a committee, was there is changing technology. So things are going on all the time about other filtration systems, things that use, systems are kind of like a water softener, things that have other filtration systems that can be used. And maybe that's going to be more cost-effective in the long run, that it will still work very well, and be safe for our residents. So those are things we want to continue to investigate and continue to work with the powers that be, whether federal or state, to make sure that those are available to our residents who are affected. The last one, the educational campaign around challenges to individuals and the town of Fairfield as a whole, i.e. health concerns and property values, have a one-stop portal for information and make the information available in various formats, including electronic and print. So we want to create a PFAS toolkit so everybody can go through it and understand the problems, the solutions, things that you can do, you know, even talking about raising vegetables at your house. So all that is there, and kind of so people, when they're moving to Fairfield, then they will at least understand the situation. And then host a semi-annual public informational meeting so that you can give updates on where things are going, just like Kevin talked about, the fact that we haven't had testing done here in months and not getting answers along that line. So I think that's my biggest point, kind of in conclusion. One of the biggest worries we have is the changing of the standards. So you have one hundred and forty-nine wells that are currently being filtered, but there is, if, depending on, you know, the new standard, four parts per trillion, we'd have an additional one hundred and ten. So you're looking at two hundred and fifty-nine wells in this town that are affected. Those of you who are under twenty are out of luck at this point for any kind of filtration being paid for. And also, people who've had testing previously, your levels may have changed. And so I had my wells tested, I'm in the area, fortunately, the aquifer doesn't quite extend, the hydraulics are good, and I was at low levels, almost negative, but hey, things change. So those people who are sixteen, getting tested now, they may be thirty, but there isn't that additional testing, and that's because the state is really looking at moving forward to other clusters and trying to finish off all those before they come back to us if they have any funding left. So I think it's, again, looking at those costs, you know, that could be potentially at the current cost for most annual filtrations of about five thousand dollars. We're looking at, for those wells, we're looking at one point three million dollars a year in expenses to residents of Fairfield. That's substantial. So we want this to mean, kind of stay at the front of the burner on the stove and also make sure that we work with all state and federal contacts to make sure that we aren't forgotten and that we get the funding that we deserve. So that's, in a nutshell, there's a lot there. It is, all the letters. We do want to thank the departments, the DEP, the ACF, CDC, for all coming to our meetings. I'm sure they felt they were concerned that it might be more of an aggressive approach on our end, but we really went out about it to seek information and ask questions and learn. So I do want to thank them for coming to the table and being partners with us. Michelle Floren was our town manager, did a great job of trying to steer us through. I do want to, as I looked over her, with all her late nights coming to our meetings as well, adding in extra hours, I think she, not a big fan of me suggesting more ad hoc committees, but I really appreciate her time that she gave us and had put this report together. So that's what I have. I'm sure other members of the committee would like to say something, but if you have questions, it's all in there, but I can try to answer some questions for you, I'm sure.
Let's bring up those that reserve time before we have council discuss that. So Kevin, you're up first, if you'd like to address this again.
I don't have anything to add other than what Councilor Townsend had to add. I would like to thank Michelle for helping guide us through that process. We had a lot of questions, we met with a lot of people. This was my first committee. I spent a lot of time away from the meetings, doing research and making sure that we had our facts straight in the paperwork that we were discussing during our meetings so that we provided you with a factual report based on all the information that we have garnered throughout the different departments at the state level. I would ask, I don't know what comes up next, but I would ask that you, as council members, take a hard look at our recommendations. We did not treat those lightly. I think, like I talked to some of you before, this easily could have been a two-hundred-page document. However, the town council requested the top three, I guess, questions or missions that they wanted us to accomplish. I think, you know, we had a project, I think we came up with seven or eight different priorities that we felt, but as a committee, we had to narrow it down and add the one, the one which is the fourth on there, for knowledge of our residents. It was eye-opening. I think there's a lot left on the table. Councilor Townsend mentioned the, one of the recommendations, adding the environmental committee. My take on it was PFAS is called forever chemicals, but who knows what it's going to be next year? It could be something else, it could be mercury, it could be radon, it could be something else. That being said, PFAS would fall into that environmental, and I think it's something that we need as a town to ensure that this stays on the forefront until we can ensure our citizens have safe drinking water or they have land that they can farm. Again, thank you, Councilor Townsend, for keeping us straight sometime. We actually had some heated discussions. I don't think we all agreed on everything at any meeting. We always disagreed with stuff and we moved forward with it. And not to make light of it, I can, you know, if I was the town manager, I would have a permanent rest in bitchface because having to deal with people like us all the time in the late evenings says a lot.
Pardon too, Kevin. Pardon too.
That's what makes a good committee. If you agree on everything, we wouldn't be doing our job. Thank you for all your work, Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thanks, Kevin.
Max?
I don't have that much to add. One thing that I did want to point out around our mission number two is, we went into that mission around investigate possible sustainable uses for contaminated property and establish a portfolio of possible alternatives for citizen assistance. We went into that with a lot of lofty goals, I think, around creating a big template of information that we could provide to residents and tell them what they can grow on their property. We sort of reeled that back in as we were going through our discussions. We want to make clear in the report that the members of the committee are knowledgeable about PFAS, but we are not experts, and that's why we're going to direct a lot of technical questions to the experts at the CDC, the Department of Agriculture. So that's just something to note for the council as well as the citizens out in the community. I think around develop a long-term plan for, or develop a long-term plan for clean water availability, we have done a good job in providing recommendations that we feel that the community can support. We understand the vote that took place a couple of years ago, and we, I think, the committee believes we understand what the residents had for concerns around the proposed project at that time, and we have put forth a proposal that we feel will alleviate those concerns and that the community can support, as well as the Kennebec Water District being able to support as well. So if there's any questions, certainly happy to answer those, but I'll just echo what everybody else said. Thank you to all the committee members, thank you to the various state departments, and thank you to Michelle, who worked oftentimes Sunday afternoons to get this report done for us.
Thank you, Max.
Thanks, Max.
Did George come back in?
No.
No? All right, let's just go around the table. Councilor Thibodeau, why don't you stop for us? Any questions?
More comments?
Yeah.
There are basically eleven recommendations for the town council, twelve if you want to count the establishment of an environmental committee, which would come from us. I think it's important for us to take a look at the recommendations and prioritize them. That needs to be done. I believe I heard Matt say that the priority is to take a look into public drinking water, right?
I would think the, one of the largest ones is making sure that we maintain funding for current systems that we have in place. That'd be one of the most pressing one at the moment, but yes, I think that the clean drinking supply, whether that's public, then that would be a large one.
That we have control over. When you talk about the current funding or getting more funding, that we're dealing with the state and federal governments, but for us, in the long term, we're looking at the feasibility of public drinking water.
Right, and I think we feel strongly that that will definitely require federal and state partners to make that happen, to make sure that funding for that does not come from local taxpayers or is extremely minimized to come from local taxpayers.
And looking at grants.
Right, totally.
Yeah, so I'd like to think that when we talk about this again, we can prioritize the recommendations. Otherwise, I'm afraid things would get left behind, but if we have a clear schedule of what we're looking at and we know, we can work on that and create a calendar and get things going. I agree that there should be an environmental committee that will continue for years to come, because what's happening to the land and people's homes, it's going to affect them for years to come. So it's only fair for us to have that committee. I can't, my gratitude for everybody, it's just amazing, and it's hard to work at something when there's so many different opinions and emotions, and my hat goes off to all of you. I'm so proud of all of you, and I'm looking forward for more progress in the years to come.
Thank you, Stephanie. I think part of that, I may just interject, I do, one of my proposals would be, when budget season's done, whether we put it on the docket for July or something in that timeframe, would be great to actually come back around, prioritize, and make sure that we move forward with the ad hoc committee. Those are my recommendations, but.
I got one question really, because I saw the filter systems and you mentioned that, the funding. Does everybody have a filter that needs one?
So everyone that, Michelle, you might be able to answer this better. So everybody who had the opportunity, got tested, they had opportunities to have it filtered. I can't tell you if there is not a well out there that's been, that somebody says, I don't want it, I'm just use bottled water, and they don't have a filtration. I'm not sure if there's one missing. Everybody that I know of that tested positive has one, but there may be somebody who has a.
And I'm not aware of anybody who's denied one.
Right.
I know that when the DEP was here in two thousand and twenty-three, there were some folks, as you'll find in that report in their PowerPoint presentation, who had not had filters installed at that time, because there were some folks that needed sheds constructed because the filtration systems would not fit within their homes, so there was just a delay in that piece. But to answer your question, does everybody that need a filter have one? If you think about the fact that the EPA guideline for PFOA and PFOs is four parts per trillion, and we have one hundred and eleven people in town who are between four and twenty parts per trillion, who do not have filtration systems, and that the state has said that they are not sure if they would have any funding to install those, so the answer would be no. Everybody that lives in town does not have filtration systems that needs them.
So the original one hundred and forty-nine that were tested had the opportunity to get filtrations.
Yes.
The additional one hundred and eleven that you talked about, bringing us up to two hundred and fifty-nine.
That's since the new EPA.
That are between four and twenty parts per trillion.
Correct.
Do not.
And then the other part of all of that, that was part of the committee's conversation, is that if you're aware of how the state of Maine did their testing, if they tested at your house and say you were at fourteen parts per trillion, so you're under the twenty, and they went to the next house and they were at ten parts per trillion, under the twenty, and they went to the next house and they were at nine parts per trillion, they would stop because they reached the edge of contamination that they found in which it was over the twenty parts per trillion. But those people, that's how they know that there's one hundred and eleven people who are between the four and twenty. What if those people that are, those one hundred and eleven people, they're at four, or maybe they're at six, but the next three houses down the street that they never even bothered tested are at five? And that's part of the committee's concern, and that's the need for additional testing, is that there may be more than just that one hundred and eleven that the state knows about, and the state's aware of that. That was very much part of our conversation. They just, they were still in their tiered process of testing communities around the entire state. They had not finished that process yet, if there was any funds left over, and I believe the quote was, if we don't find another Fairfield, we might have some funding left over when we come back.
Okay. Peter?
Okay, I have some comments. I want to say, I'm one of the counselors, I'm with Kevin, I'm only a mile from his house, so I do have a filter system for three years. I don't know if the council knows, I mentioned to Kevin that Representative Nikki put a bill in, this council, for ten million dollars with helping Nate Saunders to, with Fairfield, try to get money for Fairfield for water system. That has been in the legislature this term, and it's, we don't know where it's gone because since the start of the budget was doing all the things right now, so we don't know who went to committee. Shelley's not here, and I knew about this budget already. With that said, like residents not growing things on property, I'm a farm kid for years, for over fifty years, I still grow things on my property, even with contamination. I'm not worried because I've been exposed through the military installations all my life. I'm not scared.
So you're not scared because you've already been exposed, so you don't care? Or you don't think it's a problem?
It is a problem.
Okay. I just want to make.
It is a problem because I'm in the contamination area myself.
I think, and that's very fair and very, and I totally, if I were in your shoes, I probably would do the same. I just want to make sure that I was hearing you correctly.
Right. Also too, I know we talked about it on the Economic Community Development Route Two Oh One, water expansion, and plus with the town farm rule, we've talked about that already, and that's been in the works. So we chose to try to find funding. We don't know what's funding out there. That's the worst thing about it. We don't know if it's dried up, and I, my recommendation is to give this report to Representatives with Nikki and Scott Seaway, because they got the bill in, and so they can have ammunition for the state. So that's my recommendation.
Yep, I think that's part of where we want to approach things. I think it would also be very important for them to work with us, to talk about the areas that are most affected. I think that's probably what they're looking at, because our first phase of any kind of water system would be in, probably in the ten million dollar range, so it seems to be making sense along that line, and it would probably extend in some of the areas that are most highly affected, and obviously be a shorter distance.
Also too, I read in this report about property taxes. Years ago, three years ago, I mentioned to a few legislators, we should have a bill out there, just like we have a homestead. Veterans, property tax relief for these people with property contaminations. That needs to be done then.
Yep, and I think that's, yep, I think that's one of our parts in there, monitoring that. Because of the wide variability and fluctuations of real estate over the last few years, I don't think we've gotten a good feel for that. My personal opinion is, those values have dropped, but in the big picture, they're saying all the values haven't dropped.
Okay.
So that's, so the big numbers say no. In my head, I don't believe that, but I think the next step is moving forward, is when we are shown that those property values have been affected and those people should receive some type of decrease, decreased assessment because of that, then the state should step in and help us to pay that difference, and at least we'll work with the municipalities to replace some of that lost tax income.
Because I know you know the budget too there, Matt, because they just look at it now, what's the structure in the property? They do not look in the ground right now for the property.
Right, and they're also looking at, when you start looking at some of the values, they're looking at, like I said, when they're doing reassessments, and they're looking at the sales of properties, and there've been sales of properties with PFAS contamination that have been at market rates. So I think that will, I think that will change when the real estate market isn't as hot, which has already slowed down, so I think they will start seeing a better idea of the actual probably loss in value, but we'll see. I think something that I would definitely propose that should be part of it.
Correct. That's all my comments.
Tim, I had another question.
Go ahead. Because I'm going to interject last. Go ahead.
So I'm the only one that lives in town, that's on City Water, I think.
Oh, I'm on City Water.
You're on City, right?
Yeah.
And I know that this was discussed a long time ago about City Water being contaminated as well, and I don't know what the levels are. Do you?
So the last ones we saw, and actually Max can probably speak to this better than I can, the last ones I saw were at four or less, anyway, coming for the supply, but you can correct us.
I am Max Kenny, the citizen, not Max Kenny, the Kennebec Water District employee right now.
There you go.
The Kennebec Water District, as well as all other public water utilities across the country, will be required to comply with the four parts per trillion rule by the end of 2029.
What are they right now, Max? I've heard eight.
I think it's at seven.
It's a range. The low end, three, the high end, eight. It depends where you're sampling.
So potentially, now, what's the average in the center? I mean, we'll take the hundred and, I don't think there is an average.
There really isn't an average. There's areas.
I can tell you various, no matter where you go, my sister is right next door to me, and she has a filtration system, they have tested mine twice, and I'm like Dr. Townsend, I'm clean as a whistle. The problem when we're talking about groundwater is we deal with underground veins, and that could shift tomorrow, that plate can shift tomorrow, and the one that's on filtration may not need it tomorrow, and the one next door now is contaminated, and you're not going to know.
And we have seen that. I mean, I'm personally somebody who does have a filtration system, the state tests, or has tested the water. The state tests, or has tested the water every quarter for the past couple of years, and it's never been the same. I would be shocked if anybody in town has had the same numbers every time it's been tested.
Mine was even each time, every three months. Mine never changed.
Okay.
And I'm a mile from Kevin Kitchen.
Yep.
So I guess you said it had to be down by 2029? Who's going to bear the cost of that? Would that be KWD?
It depends on what alternative to meet the new federal MCLs, Kennebec Water District moves forward with. But it would be likely achieved through grant dollars that the federal government has set aside for public water utilities only.
All right, awesome.
And that's, and that's kind of the difference, too. We started talking about water systems. There's the difference between your well and a public water system. And I think that's where it gets kind of muddy there. We start, you start hearing numbers, the numbers are referring to what we use, but then the, there's higher standard, different standards for the public water system. And they're tasked with meeting those standards, those improved, those higher standards by 2029.
Well, and it's not that there's higher standards. It's the only thing with standards.
With standards, right, right.
There are no drinking water standards for private wells.
Right.
Only for public drinking water systems.
So the first thing I want to address for the committee, again, thank you. But I think the number one question is safety. All everybody really cares about is, is it safe to drink my well? Is it, is it safe to drink my city water? Is it safe to grow vegetables? And how is my groundwater? The physical effects on our bodies for those that have already been prone to this for years. I'm probably one of them. I mean, I moved 18 years ago, but it was 18 years prior to a well that could have been contaminated. Knowing now that most likely, even our city water is contaminated, everybody in town, not just out of town, whether it's four parts per trillion or 2,000, the federal limit is going to be four parts per trillion. It's probably going to be zero in four years. But the state's had a limit originally of 20. If we have city water at eight, my safety concern is for every citizen in town, regardless of where you live. We assess for a well in a septic in this town. You pay a higher value on your taxes already if you have a well in a septic. So when we talk about tax commitment or real estate, I, at this point, I'm worried. I haven't seen homes that aren't selling because they're contaminated, because every town around us, every town, has it. They just haven't tested properly. And like Dr. Townsend said, when it hit Brunswick, it's a big city. Now it's a big deal. You know, when it hits Fairfield or Unity, oh, they're farm towns, or they're, you know, small towns, not as much of a big deal. I recently read that one of the farms got bought out through the 300 million that they had stored away. And if they're going out to agricultural land to buy that out, that money's going to run out fast. So when, when I hear safety, my first question was, Kevin, was, they're not testing anymore. Who's going to pay for the testing? I deserve to know what's in my water. Well, I don't care if you're in town or out of town, if you're four parts per trillion or 2,000 parts per trillion. The damage was done by outside entities that the state allowed. You know, do you blame it on the farmer that spread it? Do you blame it on the plants or chemicals, or wherever the process came from? Ultimately boils down to the state, and they've been bearing the cost so far, whether it's filtration systems, testing. But we know they're going to run out of money, so the feds are going to have to come in. Again, my concern is, it's the whole state. It's not just Fairfield, Maine. So I do worry about our real estate values and things like that, because the public awareness is there. The press has been on Fairfield when it's an unfair press, because it truly is all around us, whether it's Norwich Walk, Oakland, Benton. It's here. But our citizens deserve clean drinking water. And as a council, I think they're asking us with this type of report, what are you going to do for us? Well, I'm not a scientist, and I don't know that right channel at this point in time. You know, do we, do we put pressure on our state reps? These bills that they're going to pass, I'm sorry, they're Republicans. They're not going to make it to the table. Not in our current Congress, or Senate and House, or Democratic run. Those bills are not, I don't care unless there's a Democratic sponsor. They're not going to make it to the floor. The supplemental didn't pass, so I don't see that happening this year. And if Kevin said he hasn't been tested since October, we're already six months, and he wants answers.
Great.
And I want to be able to help give him answers. So I think the five of us have to figure out, where do we put pressure on the state? Michelle's already heavily involved, but they're going to run out of funds. If, if what Max just said, that the city's got to be compliant, which means Kennebec Water District in Vassaburro has got to put in filtration systems so that their hundreds of thousands of people that use city water are compliant by 2029, I guess we're going to be compliant by 2029 as well. But for four years, when we keep having people drink water that's below federal stand, above federal standards, what's the risk? We don't, we don't know yet. Everything I read, it's, it's in our food, it's in our food packaging, it's in our pots and pans, it's in our clothing, it's in our furniture. You know, it's new. It's like saying, you know, take an aspirin for 25 years, and now it's not good for you. So, you know, as Max said, it may, it may change. But I don't think that's the answer that the committee's looking for at this point. So do we, do we really put pressure on the state and say, hey, look, you said two and a half years to five years on these filtration systems. That's already been a year and a half. Are we going to run out of funds in a year? Or do I tell those 149 people to have to pay $5,300 or $5,000 a year for the filtration system, and then I'm taxing them for having a well in a septic at $250 to $500 a year already on an appliance that's no good? Can't use it? So I guess those are my questions for the council, not so much the committee. But I'd like to know what the committee's questions for us are on how you want us to handle it. We can create all these new ad hoc committees. This is fabulous, fantastic work with a ton of knowledge and information. But you guys want answers. That's what this boils down to. How do we get those answers so that our citizens feel safe? So that people that want to sell their property aren't worried about my property value not worth what it should be, or it's not worth what it's assessed for? I don't have that answer at this point. But I'm more than willing to get it, to work towards it.
I guess what the committee wants. And I think that's what the, make sure that it stays at the front. And so that, again, following, rounding back up on this, and looking at those priorities, and hitting the ones that we can hit first, and that are going to make the most difference. To me, that's putting pressure on the state is to make sure we maintain funding for additional testing and filtration. That's the, that's the kind of, yes, we need the money, but that's the low hanging fruit that's going to affect the most people. From there, then I think it's, you know, looking at the other, other things we talked about.
But we certainly need, we need to press for funding immediately.
Immediately.
Because they're not getting testing, and you need to know what your levels are at.
Right.
Do you think, I know, send this to a representative in the Senate, you think they, you should have a letter endorsed by them that's sent to our congressional delegation too, down in DC?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Endorsed for us, to Augusta reps, and to a delegation.
You need to approach every person you can.
And I think it's important for us to have our ducks lined up in a row. And we really need to take a look at the recommendations set forth by the committee before we even do anything, so that we know what we're going to be doing.
Sure, sure. But right now, Steph, they need, they need funding to continue. If it's going to run out and they're not testing now, we need funding. Look, Susan Collins is what, head of the Appropriations Committee. She's on the most powerful committee in our entire country. And she's in our district. Why can't we write a letter and say, hey?
There's nothing wrong with that. We could do a letter.
Yeah, so there is funding available at the federal level for the new minimums. The issue is, is that funding very specifically states it cannot be used for private drinking water well filtration systems, because it can only be used for public drinking water systems. And the reason is, is because there are no regulations on private drinking water wells. So there is funding that has been issued at the federal level. It happened, it was announced, it was part of the, is it the Interstate Inter something Plan? It came out four, five years ago. The funding is there. It just can't be used towards private drinking water filtration systems, unless that filtration system is simply a stopgap to the connection of a public drinking water system.
Can we get it for instruction, so we can go up 201?
That's part, that's part of the law, is that you cannot use those funds for that purpose.
So the federal program has excluded all rural areas that are not-
That is correct.
Connected to a public auto-
That is correct.
So they're going to try to force-
That's why the committee's recommendation was the investigation for the public drinking water system, because that you could get funding for.
What?
And it boils down to, quite frankly, taxpayer dollars for private gain. Right? There are filtration systems installed in homes all across the state of Maine, have been for years. None of them had anything to do with PFAS contamination. Right, but if you live in Belgrade Lakes and you're on the lake, you probably have a filtration system in your camp or in your home. There were people that were found in this community that had arsenic levels so high, not PFAS, but arsenic, that they needed a filtration system. So those things happen. But it's the whole taxpayer dollars, private gain piece. And like I said, there is funding, but it's for public drinking water systems. So the issue is that's at hand, is again, funding is most urgent. So if the council comes up with a plan, if they want to do, by going with some of these recommendations, what you want to do is you do not want to be the last one asking for that funding, because that funding is limited, and it's for the entire country, based upon all things being equal as to what they were when this all came out. Who knows what tomorrow will bring? But that's where that stands. So what you could do very easily is we could compile a list of what all of the committee's recommendations are, just the recommendations, right? So shorten up that piece of the report. Have the council schedule this as a workshop item, whether it be two weeks or 30 days from now. And you work on start those next steps. What are your priorities? You prioritize those, and you start that conversation. And you start working towards that, and what are some of those goals?
And we need to do that, to go for any monies. We have to have our plan in place. So that is what we can do now. So I think if we're going to do something like that, it should be a designated workshop. That's the only thing we're going to talk about.
Special meeting.
I don't think it needs to be a special meeting. I think we, because right now, until we get the town meeting over with, I don't foresee too much happening for a heavy agenda. Michelle, what do you think?
No, I don't make no promises in anything.
No promises. But if we just take our Eighth Order of Business and dedicate it to our prioritization of recommendations from the PFAS committee, we then can go and start our plan of action.
Can we put like a one month date on it? Not next meeting, but the prior meeting? We meet in four weeks to have that consolidation of recommendations to go over?
The second meeting in April?
I just don't, if I know people have already been six months without testing.
Yeah, first meeting in-
I don't want to put it off another three months.
Well, that I'm gonna- We can't control, well, I have, I understand where you're coming from, Tim. But what we can control right now is the recommendations and coming up with a plan. If we start to move too quickly, which could happen, because we feel for everybody who's not getting tested, then we could actually do more injustice. And I would rather us do what we're capable of doing, and then look at the alternatives. Because what you're talking about is going beyond the money that Michelle talked about into some area where there's no money allocated right now, or pretty slim. But we need to be proactive in this, and trying to find it, and not jump into it so fast.
I'm not saying jump in hastily. I'm just not, I'm saying, don't delay it.
No, it won't be delayed, but it will have its place.
Let's get moving on, so that the people that are affected know we're working on it, and they see it. It was transparent, and they know that we have a plan in place. We're not going to throw in a willy nilly plan.
But we need that plan from us first, before we can do that, and talk to our representatives in Congress and at the state. So I think that's a good first step.
Michelle, schedule.
So first of all, the issue that Kevin spoke of at the top of the meeting about the testing for folks that are already have filtration systems, hopefully we'll have an answer to that question tomorrow. That I will start working on tomorrow. That has no bearing on what you do with this committee report. That's a completely separate issue, and we'll find out what's going on with that. And we'll keep going until we have an answer to that piece.
Could you send, once you have an information email us?
Yep.
Because it's on our minds.
And then what I would recommend is that if you're going to schedule this, if you did this at your April 9th meeting, it's not anything I know of off the top of my head right now, that puts you in between your deadline for everything to do with the budget. If you don't finish everything tonight, and before the public hearing on the budget that you have to have at the end of April, that you just scheduled. So 9th could potentially work for you. And we'll put that as, hopefully be able to shift enough things around that that is your only workshop item for that meeting.
Okay, that's great. Sounds good.
That sounds good to me, too. Thank you.
As, just as a committee member sitting on the council, try to wear both hats, but I just want to thank you for your support on that. And I think it's helpful to keep things moving, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, so we're all in agreement to table that to the 9th for another discussion, more condensed, the recommendations. Okay, so any other discussions on that?
No.
One item. Okay, we'll move on. Discuss additions to the current fire department staff and levels. I've been working on this with Michelle and Travis all week. Michelle, you want to lead us into this?
So this is leftover from the council's budget conversations as to how do you want to, or what do you want to do with all of that? So what had originally been put forward to the council? Let me see here. I think I'm going to be able to, I think. Ta-da. What we had discussed was three additional staff members that could potentially be a separate warrant article at town meeting and not tied to the fire department budget as a whole. And then that way, you could figure out what, if it was something the community wanted to do. So if you were to do a separate warrant article for three additional staff at the fire department with the new union contract wages, that would be $458,989.53 for all three. And remember, that was factored at the higher rate if, per se, we were to hire three paramedics, and if that was what we would do. Because we just needed to make sure we had enough in the account.
Is this at the 56 hour or the 42 hour rate, Michelle?
This is at the 56.
Okay.
So I'll take over from that, Michelle, because originally I was opposed to the 56 hour. And I, we worked on a 42, obviously. Travis would have to talk to the staff, and they have a union contract. I redid the numbers. It's less money to do at the 56 hour because of the less people. And what it boils down to is benefits. So when you've got Maine PERS at 13.2%, and FICRA and Medicare at 7.65%, healthcare at roughly $29,000, $30,000, roughly $29,000, $30,000, you factor in a lot more staff, I'd love to see the staffing levels for safety concerns there, but it makes more sense at this point to get to that nine for staff. Currently we're at six in one utility. If we could get to nine where we staff three per shift, that's going to be more cost-effective. We need to get to four per shift if we're going to talk about ambulance.
Yeah, I understand that, too. But also, two, we're not getting the applications. Scott Higgin's getting 29 applications. We have people leaving their own work, 56. What I heard is staffs telling people, "Don't apply" because they want all the overtime money. This is what I heard.
Hold off on that. Let's segue back to on the need for additional staffing. So it all boils down to Delta. For all of this to work for us, we subsidize Delta as a town of Fairfield. Benton also subsidizes Delta as a town of Benton, and that's done per capita. So for every citizen we have, we pay $35 per person, as does Benton. The two combined, we're paying well over $300,000 to subsidize Delta. And we have no certainty that no other local towns are going to pull out, i.e. an Oakland or Sydney, Smithfield, whoever's in their district, they pull out, we're in trouble because they're not going to be able to function. Or next year they double our rate, we have no idea what they'll come in next year. So Maine General, Northern Light are having issues. Maine General currently subsidizes Delta. There's no guarantees that they're going to do that next year as they have their own financial problems. As far as the staffing goes, I'm on board either way. It will be more cost-effective for us to have our own service because it will generate a revenue service once it's rolling, even at a discounted rate, whatever we factor for, because we're not a billing service. I do have a spreadsheet that Michelle and I have been working on that will show the cost savings to do exactly that. We also have a negotiated contract with Benton that I've asked Michelle to please meet with their board as they're no longer paying the 23% to 25% of their share of that negotiation. So I don't think they'll have an issue with it. I'm not going to speak for Benton, but that first needs to be negotiated because that's between $70,000 and $90,000. Throw that on top of the $310,000 to $320,000 that we're already subsidizing Delta.
That's in combination.
In combination.
Yeah.
Now, there's the $400,000 that Michelle's showing. That doesn't show any revenue for having a billing service for what our guys are already doing. When Travis's men show up, they're already triaged, they're already ready to go, they're first on the scene. We just don't transport. So he's doing all the work for somebody that we're paying to come take care of our people and they bill for it. And granted, they may not, they may not get that full fee with Medicare reimbursements and no insurance, but that's a given. But the only way for us to take control of our own destiny, unfortunately like Waterville and Winslow did, they put us in this position, is to transition into an ambulance service so we can not only support the staff that our audit says we need to have, create a safer environment for our fire department, and also get the staffing levels for when they show up for a fire. They're already four men working on shift. There's no need to worry about who's showing up on call, the chief's not here yet or, you know? And it will double the amount of people, triple the amount of people that are off in a given day as call log roster will be more available because we're already staffing that personnel. So at this point, my advice to council, and I know I've been in that crowd and said, "No, we can't do this." And the only reason I said that is I was not factoring into the cost of the subsidization that we give to Delta already and not taking into account any revenue that comes in. And if it just offsets the personnel, it's a win-win because we have our own equipment, we're in charge of our own service, and obviously we're going to get there quicker and it's a better service for our citizens, both Fairfield and Benton.
Now, is this what you're using for the 56-hour? Do you still want to go with that?
So what Michelle has there is based on a paramedic.
Yep.
Okay? So if we stuck with 56-hour work schedule, which is our current contract, and we get to three per shift instead of two that we currently have, would take nine to staff three shifts, that's what we currently have. As long as there's one paramedic on per shift, that could get us started. But within a year, we need to get to four people per shift. To do that, we have to have a transition period. Again, I always push stuff, Steph, I'd like to see it. If we say, "Yes, let's go with this, put it to budget," it passes, Travis would still out order an ambulance, we'd have to train and staff people, get them ready. I'd love to see by January 1, we're operating in billable.
Yeah, but are we at the 56 or the 42?
56. Either one is going to be about the same. They're really close.
The council has never discussed 42.
Right.
You could have that discussion later, but you couldn't go to 42 without hiring at least two new people before you could even think about that. Because 42 requires you to run four shifts, not three.
Correct.
And so we can't run four shifts with six people.
And that's also a contractual issue.
That's why I was under the impression as we were going to wait for it to see it back.
We were, but I redid the numbers today. It is less money to add three people to get to nine and run three per shift at 56 hours. The reason being is you're not factoring in the benefits.
Yeah, the $29,000, right?
Well, no, it's more than that. It's about $50,000 per employee. $29,000 just for the healthcare. You've still got the retirement system, you've still got your Medicare and Social Security, you've got to add the $4,000 in the HRA, you've got radio. So instead of nine people, you've got to get to 12. So you're adding three additional people at roughly $50,000 apiece is another 150 grand. The savings isn't there. It's just less people. And when we talk 12, we really need to get to 16. We have to get to four per shift.
I guess I don't understand.
And that's what that audit boiled down to, Matt. We have to get to four per shift. So we, at four per shift, we get to 12, which we're currently staffed at seven, we're currently staffed at six because the chief's going to hire somebody, well, he's going to hire somebody soon, we've been down one for a while. So I'm now in the position to say, "Chief Leary, here it is, you got to do either this or that." It wouldn't be up to their crew, it's their contract. Either way, it makes financial sense for us to do. It does.
I just can't see having one ambulance at a 56-hour spread and they're not going to be able to cover it. It's impossible to do.
With three people?
It's impossible.
Why?
They can't even do it now.
You know, I
We have two people.
They, I use challenge right now with your staffing levels, yes or no?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So you're going to add an ambulance to even make it even worse with adding, what, three people, right? So now you're going to have the same hour issues that we have.
We need to get to four per shift.
That would be, that would be better.
So, but you have to phase it in first. First, you got to put the horse before the cart, okay? You've got to phase it in. You got to get the one ambulance and the three extra people to be able to operate it within six months afterwards for a July 1 budget. Next year, you got to get to three more additional people if they stay at the 56-hour schedule, which brings our total to 12. Or if you go with a 42-hour schedule, you got to get to 16 people because you're going to have four per shift. And you're probably going to have two ambulances, not one.
And that would come as in progression. So right now, we have to start with staffing. I see it as a multi-tier operation. So up at the top would be the two ambulances and 16 people if this were a pyramid, okay? So that's what we're looking at down the road. But financially, we can't just go for that.
Exactly, that's my point.
You can't do that. So you start small. So on the bottom of that pyramid, you're going to have the three new people. Within a year, maybe two, we're shooting for the fourth person.
When does the ambulance come in?
After you've got four people, then you can man out.
So you're looking at two years?
No, 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 no.
But you just mentioned Jan 1, right?
I would, my, I mean, I'm always pushing.
But you were talking about the ease and empower.
That's right.
That's like, you're putting in real fast.
Well, not, think of it in terms of budget.
I am.
Okay? Think of it in terms of budget and what we can afford. And so if you start off with the three people, three new hires, and we go for that as our first step, then you're not going to find an ambulance overnight. You're going to work towards that.
You can't, you can't do any of it unless the goal is to get to ambulatory. You can't do any of it. So to hire the three people, we have to say, "Yes, we're going to go and we're going to hire an ambulance." How long does it take to train or staff it? That's up to Travis. The question is, how long does it take to get the ambulance in? If it's six months, then can we get it running by January 1? I don't know. If the staff is there, that would be my goal.
Yeah.
Would be up and running by January 1 is probably a pipe dream.
It is a big pipe dream because how long have we been waiting for that paramedic? Two and a half years?
Four.
You've had it opening for two and a half years, right?
On and off, yeah.
On and off.
Yeah.
Now you want to hire three within six months and we can't hire
I don't want to hire three paramedics, we already have two.
Well, no, you got two.
I don't want a paramedic.
But we can't even hire anybody.
But if you have an ambulance service, that's what they want to do.
That would be the draw.
That's what they want to do. They're already, they're already triaging when they go out and the complaint is, we're already here, we can't
We just can't afford that.
But Matt, it's going to be less money.
We're going to find the money. Because we're right in the middle of evaluations for the next three years, our budgets increasing, our residents are paying more, and you want three new employees that's going to cost about $500,000 more, what are they going to find the money from?
Because you're not, you're not, you're not looking at, so listen to me for a second. You're subsidizing already at 330 between the two towns. Benton is underpaying by $70,000 to $90,000 already. Okay? That alone covers the cost of those three employees. That alone, you're already paying it. When we look at our fire department budget, it does not include Delta subsidy for either town. You want to put both those two numbers in and then look at your fire department budget? That's your true budget. That's what you're paying currently between those two towns. I'm saying we can do it for less money by not having that service. We do it ourselves. It will be less money than we're currently paying. And that's just factoring in. I took $600,000 as well, what we were taking in billables if we build out at 1.2. Half the money coming in, you can't count on it, but you got to start somewhere. So if we can phase this in this year and I put $300,000, because maybe we can start January 1, it offsets even another $300,000 that will pay for the ambulance. I'm not asking to pay for the ambulance all upfront, which was the original proposal, to take our fire department reserve and throw $350,000 at it. I would like to do it like a car loan or a bond. We're paying off our pump-a-truck in April. Our next meeting or two meetings, that's going to be on our warrant, that's paid off and done. So that frees up money. Granted, it's not in the current budget, but why couldn't we do that to get that first ambulance paid instead of putting $350 up front? We pay $70,000 a year over five years or six years.
As a building person, where are you going to house it?
Is there room there now? We were told.
For one ambulance, there's room already.
That's the problem. We can't do it with one ambulance. It's impossible to do. So what's going to happen is Delta come, we come in with an ambulance, they leave. Who's, and everyone cries mutual aid.
Maybe.
"Oh, my God, mutual aid's going to save us." Well, they don't now. So if Delta comes to our town, they're going to charge us $800 every time if they're on a mutual aid call and it can't cover. And people say, "Well, that's 16 times or whatever, 20 times, that's what? That's not much." But the thing is, it keeps going.
Where did you get that information? Because that, we've never been told that.
I have. Just because you haven't been told it doesn't mean it's not true.
So they're going to come pick up our people and bill us?
Other municipalities that come here.
Yes, absolutely. Because if they don't have a contract with us, why would they come?
Well, we would still charge for the person that's being transported. If they're going to charge us, why would we just give it away?
If we can't cover it, who's going to take it?
Right. They're going to bill for that service to the patient they're taking.
They're still going to charge us $800.
No.
If we can't do it with one, there's no way.
Well, you have to start with one.
How many fire departments around here have one ambulance that are in service? None. Why? Because they can't do it with one.
Travis, does Clinton have two?
We have three.
Staff one, we have two total as well.
We have backups.
But you staff one.
We staff one, yeah.
I just want to clarify, there are already instances where Delta ambulance cannot make it here for a call for whatever reason, usually because they're already busy in some other location. We already have coverage by Waterville, Winslow, Clinton. There's already those pieces in place and no one, Waterville's not charging us $800 and Winslow's not charging us $800 every time they come here
I didn't say that.
To cover a call. But either way.
I did not say that.
But we could contract them instead, Matt.
That, that's one of those pieces where you would have a mutual aid agreement with area municipalities similar to what you have for fire in the future. But just for clarification for the council, you have time to have this debate about ambulances and how you're going to do that. What you don't have time, really, you have two weeks to make a decision, to decide whether you are going to put an article on the town meeting warrant for three additional staff for the fire department, irregardless of whether you go with an ambulance. We've had the conversation about the increase in call volume has been so substantial that continuing to run two people on a shift is not sustainable as this call volume continues to increase, irregardless whether you do ambulance transport. Those are bigger, larger conversations, they need a lot more detail, they need a lot more pieces for that. But for town meeting warrant, you are running out of time. It's either this meeting or you're meeting in two weeks because you can't get to town meeting and add it then. You have to get this done prior to all the notifications for our public hearings in our mailer. That's, that's where you're at.
Then I don't think we're ready to present it. We don't have $450,000.
Should it go to the town?
As a warrant, as an article?
Yeah, it's an article.
That's what I would say.
I think it should now.
And then what happens is, is the townspeople tell you whether they favor additional staff at the fire department. Plain and simple.
And that sets the tone for whatever the future might look like.
Because if they don't support three additional staff at the fire department, what happens at your fire department and what that looks like will be determined by that vote, is whether it's yes or no. I mean, that's, that is your safest bet and to get that information out there. But that's up to the council as to what you want to do. You don't have to put this on.
Matt, you thought, so I think it's both ways, right? You know, we could either just put it in the budget and then you wrote the budget up and down, or you put it on the article. I'm not sure which way the article would go. I do not know. I know that you look at the, how the fire department right now is manned and staffed and that they are burning out and that we need help. And it's been told in the, that's why we did an audit and it's been, we need to add positions. So if we actually want to support our fire department and support safety of our employees, then we want to add those three positions.
I get a question from you, Trav, again. How many departments around here run a 42 split versus a 56?
So Clinton, Waterville, Scott Higgin run the 42-hour, Austin Winslow run the 56.
And how many staff do they have over in Winslow?
They run three full-time, 24 hours a day, and then they staff a per diem. So they run four with a per diem.
And they have two ambulances?
I think they have
Three, actually.
They have three, yeah. They staff, staff one, and then the other two people can staff their second one.
Now, how, why did the last person leave?
I was told that they, they were used to the 42-hour schedule, so they went to that. They wanted to go back to that.
And how many applications have you received in the last month?
I think I've gotten five.
Any potentials?
Yep.
Do you know where Oakland runs for a schedule?
Oakland runs the 42 actually, too, yeah. But they, and they have four, just, they only have one person per shift.
I think we're kind of
So we're back to
They only went full-time.
I said we go with articles.
Do an article or just put it in the budget?
No, put it as an article and let the people vote on it. Because it's their money.
Yeah.
If they want to spend it, they can spend it, but I don't think we should spend it on something that we can't do.
Well, either way, if it's either in the budget, Matt.
Yeah, oh, I know how
You know, because then
I know what you're saying.
They can bring it down, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's up to them. I mean, if they want to spend the money, they can.
Yeah.
So We just got to have enough residents show up, 50 people determine our budget. There's a column there.
Well, it's, it's up to them. If they want to show up, they can. If they want to show up, they can.
Right, so you can always, again, change. You can always go lower at a town meeting. So, you can always put in the higher number. And so, we can get up at town meeting and propose to lower. It can't go higher.
And that would really be the going with the whole evening, and that's the easiest way.
Could we go...
Just put it in the budget line.
Two additional members. Ask the union to remove the utility position to get us to nine instead of three positions to get us to 10.
I'd do that.
Then you're talking $300,000.
But that's opening up negotiations for that.
But something's going to give.
So, I would rather go with the three. Start with the three. And then if they need to cut it back to two, that could be an option for reopening negotiations so that we get the third.
Yeah, but what would two do?
Well, if it's two, wouldn't you, Travis, go with the utility position?
I'm assuming is what you're saying is rolling the utility up to the 56 and then just hiring two. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that would be good if we could do that.
So, if we go...
It's getting people to apply is great.
But again, we put in for the three hoping for the golden ticket, and then see what the people say, because they may say, no, let's just go with two this year.
I don't know.
I don't know. I either.
Well, if the goal's for staffing, you get the three per year. Let's get two and use the utility guy with the rotation. Put you there now. Because you need to get to 12 to get to our ultimate goal, 416 if you want to change the schedule.
Are you assuming that the current person in the utility position would want to go?
I don't know if he'd want to, but it's...
Because then that might open up a whole different can of worms.
It might open up an opening.
So, I guess the question is, do we put it in the budget as it is? You know, add it to the fire department budget? Or do the separate article? To me, it's 20 of one, 20 of another, one of the same. Half a dozen of one, half a dozen of...
I'm sold on getting to the ambulance service, okay? So...
And this would be a step to that.
I'm on board for what you want, but to me, if you're not going to do that at this point, I'd favor adding two positions to get to nine.
But we can't move that utility without a contract issue.
That's right.
So, I mean, we can't do that either, but...
And I'd just as soon go with the three and see where it takes us at town meeting.
Do you just make a motion on that? Is that what we do?
Could we ask that person if they'd be willing, or the contract if they'd be willing, and come back in two weeks and finalize it? Or do you want to do it tonight?
Again, it's a negotiated item.
I understand.
That's going to take a lot longer than what we probably have, because we're going to have to reopen. Michelle?
You also have a public hearing on these articles before town meeting even gets here. So, you'll already have public input before town meeting even gets here. And at that public hearing, you have the ability to still change warrant articles.
Well, that's true.
The timing is not completely set in stone.
Before.
Well, it will be printed.
It'll be printed.
And what will happen is, is, but you still have the opportunity to change the actual warrant. But the piece is with this, if you remember from the budget committee's conversation, whatever you decide here tonight, we still have to put together a very quick budget committee meeting to get them to weigh in, because their recommendation, either yes or no, has to be along with this when these documents are printed, which is why you're running out of time.
Right. And the date on the public meeting is April 23? No. Is it April 23?
Yeah, it's your public hearing.
Yeah. And that takes place here.
It's during your council meeting, top of your council meeting on the 23rd.
So, do you want to make a motion?
Make a motion that we include three new positions in the fire department budget.
Second that motion.
As a separate warrant or in the budget?
In the budget.
In the budget. Oh, no, an article, right? Is that what you're doing?
I was going, I was thinking inside, in the budget. It's the same thing.
No.
No.
No. All right, I'll rephrase that then.
Thank you.
I will make a motion that we have a separate article for three new positions for the fire department in this year's budget.
I'll second.
Article. Warrant.
So, I have a motion and a second for a separate warrant article for three new fire positions. Any more discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Three to one in favor? Okay. Discuss 25, 26, annual town meeting budget.
You're almost done. You're on the home stretch. It's heavy topic tonight, my goodness.
I think they changed.
All right.
All right, Michelle, do you want me to...
You want me to run through what you were given this evening?
You've got some highlighted items on here, so I think the difference... I'll start, Michelle. You can correct me, please. The difference between council recommendation and budget committee is going to be item 13, spring cleanup. Council recommended nothing, and budget committee recommended 20,000. That is an annual thing. I think we know how it's going to go. Do we want to leave that as zero for council recommendation, or would you like to match a budget committee recommendation?
We'll support Bruce. Leave it at zero.
I would like to leave it at zero, too.
Okay, so we'll present the higher number anyway, and we'll let the townspeople speak. Capital reserves, the only difference. Council came in at 255,000. And budget committee, they agreed to add an additional 10,000 for the revaluation reserve. So, they came in at 265,000. I think those of us who were in attendance were in agreement, well, we'd like to up that total to 265,000.
I would.
Yeah? Good with it.
To move to 265?
Yeah.
Move that to 20.
Yeah, we're unanimous on that. So, we will move that to 265. I don't think there are any other differences other than, I think, Michelle, there's more state revenue sharing. Is that correct?
There weren't any differences, but there was a difference in your sheet, and I just wanted to point that out, which was under the revenues. So, originally, when your budget packets were given to you, the 24, 25 revenue sharing number listed under budget was $1.4 million. And we had discussed during the council's process and the budget committee's process that how, when it came time for the commitment, those numbers had been adjusted, and that is not the number that was used during the commitment. We used $1,250,000 in the commitment for 24, 25, but that number was not put in your budget sheets. So, today, when I was going over some things and looking at the impact of this budget, potential impact for the mill rate and that sort of stuff, realized that that, it was yesterday, that this was not in place. So, I just made that correction, because the revenue sharing we're using, predicting in the 25, 26 budget is only down $100,000 from the 24, 25 budget, as opposed to what was on your sheets before, said it was 250,000, and it's not. It's just 100. And I just wanted to make sure you saw that and saw that we got that on course.
So, that's a difference of 150,000 total?
Yes, yes.
So, what is our...
So, the budget committee's recommendation right now, if I do the fix...
How much are we up from last year? Is it 549 instead of the 699 that we originally...
Yeah, except for the 10,000 that you just added in.
Okay. So, it'll be 559, 772. That's with council recommendation of $950,000 from undesignated fund. We have the opportunity to raise that or lower that if you guys would like to.
So, that is actually part of my bigger discussion, I think, and whether it's well-liked or not. I think this year is a difficult year, and I think Michelle should be commended, and I'm sure she will not be happy with me making this recommendation, but I think she should be commended on doing a great job of having an undesignated fund balance. And I do think this is one of those rainy days, because we are trying to go through, and that's what talked to me a little bit about the fire department, making the transition to a different staffing plan. Also, with the tax increases that we have that are just there, I think each department is doing a great job of trying to keep their expenses down. We're also looking at state revenue sharing. We have over $8 million in undesignated fund balances of 630, 24, 8.3 million. We like to keep between three and six months. We have, after paying the 950,000 for the 2024, 2025 commitment, we would have $1 million that, so that would fit in of the additional 950. I'm actually proposing that we would take 1.45, which would drop us down to 5.9 million or 5.5 months of reserve, which I think at this point is reasonable to me. You may not like it, may not want to support it, but I, and that's okay. I think it's worthwhile at this moment to help in that transition, potentially with the fire department change and with taxes, to try to help us get through this year anyway.
What did you say the amount was?
It would be one point, I would increase that amount to 1.45 million from 950,000. That'd be a $500,000 increase in the required, from the amount taken from the undesignated fund balance.
That could be put towards the taxes.
Correct. That would drop us down to about 5.9 million, which our current monthly rate would get us about 5.5 months.
What would they do to help us with our taxes?
Well, it depends on what you do with the fire. It would actually zero out the fire, or if you drop your raise, you drop it down to a $49,000 increase, $59,000 increase.
We just got to file, too, what the other two budgets come at, too, because we usually...
Well, we know counties at less than 1%. That's what Commissioner Seize Act just told us. We do not know what school is, and we will not know until...
After.
Probably May, Michelle? We meet in April, and then they've got...
Yeah, we won't have any idea what the school is quite soon.
We will already have passed our budget before school is ever done.
We got to invite the budget.
April 17.
Yeah. So, we will have their... So, we will know how much it is.
Well, you'll still have to go to meeting in May. Ours will already be done. They'll pass their warrants at that time for SAD 49, and that will go to referendum vote, and we'll vote on those individually, as will each of the other three towns. So, you can never count on a school.
Typically, what is it, though? I mean, and you've done it for years, you know what I mean? What is it usually?
I would love to say it's going to come in lower because they're consolidating. They've already closed one school. They're supposed to consolidate two more schools. I believe in December of next year, they're supposed to open a new school. I have no idea if it's going to open on time, but you're going to consolidate basically three schools in a year and a half. It shouldn't cost as much to operate one school as it did three. But I don't know. And they rely on state revenue just as well as we do. Theirs is based on enrollment, so I have no idea what their enrollment amount is. And it's the same thing. They do basically real estate valuations to determine...
Altitude is true. If we lose funding, they lose funding, and that will increase.
They increase funding for the state?
If they lose that funding from federal government. That will increase their budget.
Title I, Title IX is a potential of probably $2 million.
So, we'll factor that in.
We just, we can't, we can't control the school. I mean, it's out of our hands, Council Tibbetto.
So, I'd like to go back to what Matt has suggested.
Yep.
If we take the $1,450,000 and applied that to three months of operation, the amount required, and I might be wrong, Michelle, but we still have $2,735,245 left over.
No.
Is that right?
No.
Am I doing that?
5.84 million will be left, so...
Yeah, and we only need three.
I think that's what she's saying.
Look at the six-month total.
All right, so you're adding it, not subtracting it, correct?
No, we're subtracting it from the undesignated fund, the 1.45 million.
First, my first question is, is it 1.45 million plus the 150,000?
No.
Or just 1.5 million total?
1.45.
Right. I mean, 1.45 total.
1.45 total, rather than the 950.
Right, right. So, what I'm looking at is, I know that the undesignated fund balance is at 8 million, but if you subtract the required three months of operation, if there's something that's catastrophic ever happened, we would need $3,172,145 to meet expenses for three months.
What Matt is proposing is, we will have $5,894,285 left in that fund after spending 1.45 million this year.
Which is about five and a half months.
So, that would be about... Gee, that sounds like a really good plan, Matt.
It is.
I mean, we've got the money.
Yes.
And why strap the people?
And I know it's, from the town manager's point of view, I'm sure it's difficult on this end, but I think she should be commended, because we have this. And I think this is a prime time to use this, and we're not going crazy and using...
And it's justified.
All of it. I think it's justified in this transition time, which is why I always have the discussion about the fire department. I think that's important to me. So, I think looking at that and trying to drop our taxes at this point would be really important.
All right, so then, here's my next thought. If we go with something like this, and we can justify the three positions, why not just put it as a regular line item?
Is it going to add an additional 460,000 on top?
That's not even in your spreadsheet.
So, it's not even in our spreadsheet. So, it's going to bump it back to where it was.
All right. I'm good, I'm good.
Which gives you that cushion.
But that gives me, so I think that's an important part. If we do add, if it's voted on to add that, then we have at least something to help cushion the blow.
Right. For this year.
For this year.
For this year.
Yep.
And it builds and grows every year.
Well, we'll see how it grows.
Like Matt said, I'm going to come in, Michelle, as well, because I know, I did budget for a long time on the budget committee. I know where those values were. I know hard cheese worked to bring these up. But even at last year, we were at 8 million, and we took 950,000 on our undesignated. It still grew $300,000 in addition, too. So, fantastic job.
I really want to clarify why that is, because as we say every year, if we don't spend money, that has been appropriated at town meeting, it goes to the undesignated fund balance. A lot of that growth, some of it may be revenue that we've collected that we didn't necessarily project, but a lot of that is because we've had staffed positions that have gone unfilled, and that money was there. So, I don't want the council going into this, I mean, what you choose to do is fine, but I want to really make sure I clarify the fact that don't plan on the fact that you're going to grow your undesignated fund balance by 300-something thousand dollars every year, because that may not happen. Just keep that in mind.
As we fill positions, it won't, because you're going to have that health insurance and things that we're not paying for now.
And I think that's really valid, and that's why it's important that we maintain, I mean, even if we were to fill a full budget, we would still be left with the 5.5 months, which I think is reasonable, under the circumstances.
So, if we do this, that, and it passes, the people pass at 458,000, that comes out of where?
Oh, it would be added on to the budget.
It comes from the undesignated fund balance. It's already there.
So, that would be 500,000 less than what you just said, right?
Correct.
And ambulance, it's going to be what? Three, are we going to do it out of, out of money, or are we going to bond that?
Oh, I, we'd have to come back. I would want to bond it. I wouldn't want to take it out of reserve account.
Bonding is good. Yeah.
So there's a motion and a second?
Okay. We have a motion for 1.45 million by Council Townsend, seconded by Council Tiberio. Any more discussion? All those in favor? All those in favor?
Yep.
4-0? Okay.
We're ready for budget.
We're ready to go. Thank you.
Okay. Discuss the economic development, Economic Community Development Committee's recommendation for Hay Day's event.
All right. I'll tell you, it was, it's very awkward to be at an economic committee meeting and have four of the, four of the five councilors present to do this.
Sure was.
It was very, very awkward. And it puts up some flags too, on, as to how something like this could be done. So the economic committee heard, heard what you had to say, and they did vote to bring it to the full council. But my, I've written up the report that, as it's, as it's here. And then I made some recommendations based on my experiences with Fairfield Days. And in 2028, we're going to be celebrating our Sesquicentennial, which is the 250th anniversary of us becoming the 56th town in the state of Maine. Fairfield Day started 25 years ago to celebrate the 225th anniversary. I was approached, and this is just a little history. I was on the economic committee at that time, and they wanted somebody to spearhead, somebody who could do a community event, and I was nominated. I had seven months to put it together. Kind of sounds a lot like what you guys are thinking for doing something for this year. I know it can be done, but the goal is, for me, to see us work towards a three-year plan so that we can have a program to celebrate our Sesquicentennial. It can work. It's, Tim, you started this in 2020?
Yeah.
With Kim Hawks, and it kind of had to go by the wayside because of COVID. Matt, hats off to you and Sarah for all that you have done with the community. What you're doing, bringing people in, and I think about the tree lighting at the, at the park. You guys do a wonderful job. And you know how to use the social media to get people to help you out. It gives me goosebumps when I think of all that you guys do. And with you laying the groundwork and Matt having initiative, I really think that you two should be co-chairs of a committee. This committee hopefully can go for three years to the Sesquicentennial. If it goes beyond that, kudos. But based on what happened with Fairfield Days, after three years, it kind of things started to fizzle out. So it has to be a, a committee, and you co-chair it together. I think it should be a town organized event, because we are working towards that Sesquicentennial. That being said, co-chairs, designated committee members, somebody has to work with Michelle on this. There are a lot of intricacies to get something like this done. There's legalities, behind-the-scenes stuff that needs to take place for the safety of everybody participating. You need to know, like, who, when you're working with people that are going to do events or businesses, just the insurances that are needed. Even though we'll, we can have an insurance for an event, other people need to have insurances too. It's a big responsibility. It's almost like a 24/7, 365 days out of the year, if you commit to something like this. Ask my husband. He'll tell you. And it, and it's...
So Steph, I...
If you get the good people on your committee, it makes it so much easier.
Because it's the two of us, and I'm talking with Michelle, I think it's too much undertaking to put on, on Michelle, full timeframe, that we'd like to do it in. What I'd like to propose is that we do it as a, a separate outside of, of town, not, not town-run, for a year or two. I'd like you to give Matt, Matt and I the blessing to go ahead. Let us put out with, with council's blessing. Immediately, we'll go on social media, and it's going to require volunteers, just like you just said. So what we'd like to do, and I've talked, is get the council's blessing. I, I happen to be an insurance guy, so I think we can handle event insurance, and I'll work with Michelle on, on every venue that we want to. The things that we had planned in 2020 might be too big of an undertaking, depending on volunteers and who wants to be involved, because we've talked about the Grange and possibly BF. We haven't contacted any of those people yet. I'm sure I'll reach out to Sabrina and Mark and some people in the crowd here, Kevin, on, on ideas and what to volunteer. But I'd like it to be separate, so that we can get it rolling without town interference. But come back in two months, in, in May, our second meeting in May, and present where we're at.
To the council, not the economic committee.
To the council. Show us exactly where we're at, what we have, what we have planned for events, what we think we can pull off, and then go with them. If, if the council says yes, two months is long.
If we can't, we can't.
Yeah. So we're, we're looking at August, I think, 8th and 9th, or something like that. We presented the Economic Development Committee a whole bunch of really big ideas, from field days to bands and...
I have the copy.
Car shows and different, yeah. And they may, they may stay that way. They may change. Again, we need to approach businesses in town to incorporate them and support their businesses. But we felt, listening to the, the committee's recommendations on certain events that we may want to do, it'd be better off to do it outside of a town event and do it as a private function, as long as it has council blessing. So tonight, I think, we just would like to hear from the other three councilors that we have your blessing to get started with it as a separate event.
Separate event, not town.
And bring it back in two months to present, this is what we have. Can we go forward with it?
Yeah, I think it makes more sense, and it takes, it puts the onus on, getting a volunteer group. You know, the, the town should try to, you know, work with you to make sure that venues are available, and all those kind of things. But I think it's a better partnership that way, and doesn't shift the focus on to focus at the front, you know, at the town office, or public works to have to set everything up, or whatever that is. So I think that's the right way to go.
Yeah, we're thinking public works, cleanup, safety. I mean, we're, we'll think through everything. We want to make sure we, we can pick up all the trash, and we have security, and we're not overstaffing our already understaffed department. So we just feel it's, it's better as a separate venue for now. We get up and running in two years, and things are going good, maybe we throw some money into that reserve account and say, you know, get that committee rolling, and here you go, guys. It's already running for you.
I'm good with it.
Yep.
I'm good.
Peter?
Just keep the lines of communication open, and remember that...
Are you going to join the committee?
No, I'm not.
So what?
I don't have to think twice about that, Matthew.
Michelle, what's our second meeting in May? Do you know offhand?
Off the top of my head.
I'm hoping it's after budget.
Oh, it is after budget. It is. Back up one. May 28.
So can we put that on as a discussion item for May 28?
Yep.
And that, now you got our work cut out for us.
I will.
I wish you well. I do.
I hope we can pull it off. It'll be good for the town.
It would be nice. Yeah.
Tom needs it.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll see if my always fast-forward lofty goals can actually happen, so.
I wish you well. I wish you well.
Lofty.
You know, you have to have aspirations, and then you can succeed, right?
Okay. Any other council business? Council Tiberio.
We've been invited to the 2025, 2026 school budget review and Q and A. Peter and I went last year, and it was, they had some handouts for us, but it's really hard to do a budget review when you don't have a budget in front of you, and you're just looking. And last year, it was like a 3% increase due to salaries. It didn't feel like that when we got the final result. So for our, for our share. I do plan on attending, I, attending. I've already sent Karen Kuziak my response. Is there anybody else that's planning on going?
Haven't sent my response yet.
Are you going to go, Peter?
We should, we should probably make a note that there may be councilors in attendance, because I'm...
Right. April 17.
I will.
You already have.
I'm going to try to, yeah.
Already told her.
So, all right.
Our three.
So I hope this year that we have some numbers in front of us, and I'm real concerned because of what's been happening over in Washington in the, the funding. So we'll see.
Again, beyond our control.
Some things are beyond our control. Yeah.
Any other council business?
I got, um, on our next Tuesday, March 18th, the Grange is having another, a cooking class. This is time is whoopee pies.
Whoopee pies.
And I think it's what, six to eight at the Grange?
I'll be there. Yeah, that's Tuesday.
And it's a five doll, if you want, they always charge $5.
That's good. I think I saw it on Facebook. What, what's the date again?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, March 18th.
March 18th.
Six to eight. That's it?
For, for me, I'm just going to read, so, two things. Sometimes there's little stuff that I think, Michelle, and the, and everybody at the front at the town office deals with, they try to help as much as they can. So I just got a, a text message, and I said, I mean to say to you, before I registered my truck, and this, this guy's about in his early twenties, I know, before I registered my truck, I called the town office. The town manager answered and helped me with the price to register my truck would be. She's such a nice lady. I understand why people are so mean to her. So that was his text to me. So there you go. So I just want to pass that along, that people do text, and so there you go. And I want to, I want to, I thought you should get that publicly.
Thank you.
And the other one is actually just on business, because we talked about the TIF money, and sometimes it's like, it's kind of a nebulous term, and where does it come from, and where, what is it? So at one of our, now we're throwing another thing on an agenda item, Michelle, but some point, if we can have a breakdown of a simple discussion of what TIF funds come from, what we have for TIF funds, and what do we have those in those accounts, and how we can, and what do we can use those accounts for, just so there's, there's better knowledge and how, maybe things we can move forward with them. I appreciate that. But that's, that's all I've got.
After, after budget season.
Yes. Yes, that's what I'm saying. I'm like, June, July.
It's great July conversations. Great. Great when I come back.
Okay, sounds good.
Any other council business, Matt? Michelle, did you have anything else?
I have one thing to add that I actually forgot to put into my managers' report, but while we were here, I got one of those scam, you owe us money for going through a toll plaza text messages. And it reminded me, if folks go on our website right now to pay bills online, that function is currently shut off. We came in on Monday this week and found that 400 and something people across the country were charged $25 by the town office and a $2 charge. We're working with that credit card. We have two separate credit card companies, one for our online transactions, and then another one in the town office. So that system has been shut off on our website, and we're working with them. But the company that handles those transactions from our website evidently was hacked at some level. They're not real forthcoming about all of that, but they're working through that process. So just so folks are aware, don't go to our website to try to pay anything. We're working on additional alternatives and things through the state that we're going to be hopefully offering soon, but that's currently shut off.
Thank you. So that's roughly, that's our credit card processor, and they got a cyber hack. They don't... Which is why they have cyber liability for those folks at home.
We don't even know what they charge them for, but the gentleman in Little Rock, Arkansas was quite upset about it. So we...
We have noticed too that people are, maybe have bookmarked the page and are still using it, but it has been removed.
Nobody from town got charged at all?
Not that we're aware of, no.
Wow.
No, but it was like 411 charges, which is a lot of activity for our website. A lot of activity. So it was, it was all at 2:00 in the morning, and it was all across the entire country. So it was quite interesting.
Wow.
Yeah.
Okay. With no other business, I want to thank our committees again for all the excellent work. Our next regular meeting of the Fairfield Town Council will be Wednesday, March 26, 2025, to be held as a hybrid meeting in the town, in the council chambers and via Zoom at 6:30 PM. At this time, take a motion to re, recess.
I'll make a motion to recess.
Second, third, fourth.